Good afternoon. Welcome to Kent City Council Committee of the Whole Special Meeting for Monday, June 30. First, rule call. Kim, may we have a rule call, please?
Thank you. Council President Corr.
Here.
Councilmember Boyce.
Here.
Councilmember Boyd.
Here.
Councilmember Fincher.
Here.
Councilmember Larmour.
Here.
Councilmember Michaud. Councilmember Troutner.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kim. Next item on the agenda is agenda approval. Any changes to the agenda? If none, may I have a motion, please?
So move.
Second.
Motion and second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. Next up, we have approval of minutes for June 17, 2025.
So move.
Second.
Motion and second. Any discussion? None, may... Sorry, that's my... All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. All right. Next up, we have payment of bills. We have received those in our emails.
So move.
Second.
Motion and second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you so much. All right. Okay, next up, we have Christina Shook with ordinance number 4518 repealing and replacing Chapter 5.03 KCC. Welcome.
I'm Christina Shook. I'm the deputy city attorney, and I'm here tonight to present two items. They're related, so I'm going to do one presentation, and then you'll vote separately on them. So as an overview, the city partners with King County for regulation of four higher transportation, and this includes taxis and transportation network companies, and that's your app-based ride services like Uber and Lyft. This partnership with King County has two components. Both are before you tonight. So the first is the adoption of King County's regulatory framework, which means the city adopts King County's code provisions by reference. And second is an interlocal agreement which delegates authority to King County to enforce these provisions. So what's before you this evening is not a change in practice. The city has partnered with King County since 1975 on this for higher transportation subject matter, but because King County has recently updated its code provisions, our code became outdated, and we also need a new interlocal agreement. So mainly, what King County did was they changed their code to modernize the provisions to address how these services have evolved over the years, which you've known that this kind of transportation services has evolved. And it also creates a regional licensing model. So if you look through King County's code provisions, which are not before you, but their actual code, it covers issues like setting fees and licensing requirements, driver conduct, vehicle safety. So there's a complete regulatory framework that King County has adopted. So our ordinance adopts these provisions by reference. It also makes clear that the city can still collect a general business license fee, so they still would have to get a city license. So that's the ordinance. The second piece before you is the interlocal agreement, and the main purpose of the interlocal agreement is to delegate this authority to King County to administer the regulations on the for higher transportation. So they have the power to issue, deny, restrict, revoke licenses and medallions, and then conduct any administrative appeals. The ILA renews on an annual basis unless one of the parties terminates it. And this is a standardized ILA, which means we didn't negotiate the individual provisions. All of the cities that contract with King County for this regulatory framework, they all are subject to these same ILA provisions. And finally, King County doesn't charge the city for these services. They just keep the fees and the fines that they collect. Please let me know if I can answer any questions.
Any questions? Councilmember Larmour.
Christina, question. You said that they...
Sorry, turn on my mic. So question, you said that they still apply for a city license. In what case is that? Is that if the business is located or the individual drivers located in Kent? You know, I'm not sure. That would depend on how our code reads, but if it does apply to them, they still do need to get a business license, and I think it's probably for the company. Okay. The individual drivers.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Larmour. Any other questions or comments? If none, I will read both the motions one at a time. All right. I move to adopt ordinance number 4518 repealing and replacing Chapter 5.03 of the Kent City Code, adopting by reference amended King County code provisions regulating the licensing and enforcement of laws related to for higher transportation.
Second.
Motion and second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. I'll read the second one now. I move to authorize the mayor to sign an interlocal agreement with King County delegating authority to King County for the licensing and enforcement of laws related to for higher transportation.
Second.
Motion and second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you so much. Thank you, Christina. All right. Next up, we have parks. In absence of Councilmember Show, we have Councilmember Troutner.
Thank you, Madam President. We have one item on the agenda. I see Brian's already here to talk about a contract amendment for East Hill-North Community Park Master Plan.
All right. Thank you. Good afternoon, council. I'm Brian Levit Hagan, the deputy director of the Parks Department. I'm here subbing for Kyle Woods, our PPD manager. I'm bringing forth to you the second amendment to Site Workshop's East Hill-North Design Contract. You may recall that about a year ago, we paused work on this project due to concerns about budget related to frontage improvements. We are now ready to move that work forward with a re-scoped first phase of the project, and so that's what this amendment will do. It'll allow Site Workshops to move forward. That re-scoped Phase 1 includes water and electrical services of the park, an extensive trail network, restroom facility, a few parking stalls, public art, and then improved connections to the neighborhood and also to the Suss Creek Trail. We are also, as a city, kicking off a parallel project led by Public Works Department in collaboration with Parks to improve pedestrian access along 132nd from southeast 214th to southeast 216th, and from southeast 218th to southeast 216th. That includes rapid flashing beak and crossings at both southeast 214th and southeast 218th. And you also may recall that this project has about almost $4 million in grant funding from the Washington State Department of Commerce and King County Parks, and really excited about this project, excited to get it kicked off and going again. And this contract amendment will take the project through 100% design, also permitting, and also construction administration. So with that, I'll answer any questions.
Thank you, Brian. Any questions?
Political construction administration? I'm sorry.
It's just, you know, dealing with things like RFIs and like submittals responding to the contractor, reviewing things on site, making sure that it's being built as the plans and specs.
Thank you, sir.
So Brian, so we're not making any decisions about the pedestrian access with this, or...
So this contract will include getting people from 132nd through down to the park. There's also a separate project that, like I mentioned, is being led by Public Works. That was utilizing $1.5 million that was approved in the last budget cycle to have those two crossings, one at 214th and one at 218th, and then also pedestrian access along the 132nd between those two streets. So getting people from all the neighborhoods across the street to the park and then ultimately to the Suss Creek Trail.
Okay. But that solution is not part of this contracted agenda?
No, there is some overlap in where those things will connect, and so there'll be a lot of coordination between those two design teams, and we'll work together on that moving forward.
Okay. And this may not be a question for you, but I'm hoping that that design plan would come before us as well for the pedestrian safety on 132nd?
Um... So there are two phases, so to speak, on 132nd. The first is to get folks across at 218th and 214th, and then along. So we've got the walking path that was just constructed south of Sunrise Elementary School. Similar motif along this section for Phase 1 for the money we have available currently. And then the ultimate plan is to construct roundabouts, one at 214th and one at 218th. So that's the second part of the budget approval was to design those so we could go out and try and get grants to help build those.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Any other questions? Thanks, Chad.
All right. I move to authorize the mayor to sign the second amendment to the consultant service agreement with Site Workshop, subject to final terms and conditions acceptable to the Parks Director and City Attorney. Second. I have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you so much, Brian. And back to you, Madam President.
Thank you. Thank you, councilmember. And next up, we have Public Works. Councilmember Fincher.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We're going to hear from Melissa Doll about culvert replacement work in Mill Creek Parks, or Mill Creek. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you. Hello, councilmembers. My name is Melissa Doll. I'm an engineer in Public Works, here to bring you a preliminary design contract with Somas Inc. for the earthwork sediment pond culvert placement project. It might sound a little familiar. We did bring some funds to you not too long ago that we received from the King County Flood Control District, so might be a little bit of a refresher here. Map on the right shows the current alignment of the earthwork sediment pond. Presently, Mill Creek comes in off the canyon, goes into the sediment pond, drops out. A lot of the sediment it's picked up off the hillside helps drop out some of that sediment before it gets further down into Mill Creek, and then currently goes underneath the trail through a couple of culverts. Those are the culverts in question for the replacement. The picture on the left-hand side shows an image of the sediment pond. Kind of, it's a little difficult to see, but that yellow circle shows where the culverts are approximately with the orange arrows following the map on the right-hand side. This area is really important, not only for access to the park. A few years ago, our Parks Department did a lot of work in the canyon to provide better access, and so this is one of the key locations to get to the park itself. So losing that access could get in the way of public facilities. There's also an existing water main that goes further up the canyon that is only accessible via this trail. And then significantly, it allows access to the sediment pond. We do annual maintenance on that pond, so all that sediment that drops out, we go out there on an annual basis, usually in August, and we pull out tons of material, and literally tons of material. So that helps keep that material out of Kennebec and James Street and all those areas that it typically fills up in. So right now, we're in the process of hiring a consultant firm to do a preliminary design and alternatives analysis for the replacement of those two culverts. Will likely end up being either another culvert or a bridge. That's what we're going to have them decide. And just to show you kind of why this needs some replacing, the two culverts out there right now, they're corrugated metal pipes. They're a little squashed, a little bit eaten down, so we'd be looking at replacing them something more fist-passable and a little bit more resilient moving forward. How are we going to pay for this? We've received about $330,000 from the King County Flood Control District Subregional Opportunity Fund. We brought that to you before a couple of times. We've received two separate sets of funds for that. So we'll be using some of those funds towards this grant design. We actually still have a little bit more on top of that, but this contract will at least cover preliminary design and, like I said, the alternatives analysis. We're aiming for construction in 2027, so little ways out. And I know we've brought a lot of Mill Creek projects to you all over the years. This is another piece of the overall puzzle towards making Mill Creek a healthier habitat and improved flood reduction. So just a piece of the puzzle. Yeah, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions? Well, in that case, I move to authorize the mayor to sign the consultant services agreement with Somas Inc., subject to final terms and conditions acceptable to the Public Works Director and City Attorney.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much, Melissa. Now we have our director coming up to introduce our next speaker.
You're more than capable of doing an introduction, Councilmember Fincher, but I just wanted to say very briefly, excited to have our friends from the Washington State Department of Transportation here today to talk about the 509 project. It's been about, oh, just shy of 26 years ago that I got a call from John White about a project I was working on, which became Veterans Drive. And I said, hey, we got this notice that you guys are going to build a road coming up the hill. I'm working on a freeway, and we got to figure out how these two things can go together. And so that was late in 1999. We got together, and I don't think either of us had a single gray hair. And who would have thought it'd take 25 years later, but here we are. So super excited to have the DOT here, John White, Andre Chappelle, and Amy Danberg, and I'll let them take it away from there.
Thanks, Chad, for the introduction. Council President, members of the council, my name's John White. I'm the program administrator for the Puget Sound Gateway Program. We're really appreciative to be here to provide a short update on where we're at with the delivery of the Gateway Program and in particular, the completion of SR 509. As Chad said, you know, I think in prior roles that he and I were in, our partnership, our trusted partnership with the City of Kent goes back literally decades. And we had leadership and senior staff represented from the City of Kent at our media event this past Friday where we opened up the first segment, the first mile of the 509 Expressway. So you can go and drive that first mile now, and we're going to talk to you a little bit about the program here to complete that. So we're going to talk a little bit about the overall Gateway Program briefly, talk about in particular, construction of the current stages of SR 509, and then talk a little bit about our community outreach program for this summer. So the Gateway Program, while it's very much structured around and was funded through, I think, the emphasis of freight mobility and connecting the ports to distribution centers and the layers and layers and layers of jobs that come with the freight economy. You know, I like to say that Gateway does a lot more than that. You know, we enhance access to transit. We have multimodal investments, you know, sidewalks, shared use paths, et cetera. So we have a lot of things going on with Gateway, but ultimately, you know, this is the main storyline, connecting the ports to the distribution centers. A little bit about our funding. We are funded at $2.83 billion. We had, the City of Kent was one of 18 funding partners that rose to the challenge that the legislature gave us of coming up with $130 million of local partnership funding. We actually exceeded that over the past seven years with the help of the City of Kent and our other local partners. We have a mix of funds outside of that. We have state funds, federal funds, and as you see, they're a little over $200 million of toll funding. I'm here to talk about with the opening of the first segment of 509 and the first mile of New Expressway. Ultimately, we are heading towards tolling. The Washington State Transportation Commission, who has the authority over toll rate setting and policy, on June 17th held a final hearing in a year-long process to set rates and policies for the Gateway corridors. This table you see in front of you here on this slide represents the toll rates for 509 and some of the policies. And as a reminder, the way tolling works in the Gateway corridors is similar to the 99 Tunnel or the SR 520 Floating Bridge. It varies by time of day, so depending on what time of day you're traveling, you know what the fixed toll rate is at that time of day. It varies from a low of $1.20 to a high of $2.40, and that takes you through the three-mile New Expressway. The existing parts of SR 509, so the freeway outside of the New Expressway, is not told. So one of the things we remind people of is any pathways you take today before the Expressway opened are available to you untold. We believe the told corridor, you know, given the congestion dynamics in the region, will provide great reliability and great, you know, much quicker trips for people who want to choose that route. The commission approved toll escalation at a little over 2%, a year starting in 2031 after the full corridors are finished. Trucks pay, they pay an additional toll by axle multiplier if they have two or more than two axles, similar to all the other toll routes. And then lastly, the legislature in concert with the commission adopted a low-income policy that will be implemented here by late 2026, given the legislative direction. And that will go into place at the timing of opening up the first segment of 167, and then at that point, it will go into effect for 509 as well. And the reason why it doesn't go into effect immediately is we have to do a variety of analysis and policy setting that the commission will lead and will support, and that will happen next year ahead of December. I'm going to pass it over to Andre Chappelle here. Again, just wanted to thank the city for all the great support and partnership, and Andre's here to tell you about our plan to complete 509.
Okay, let's talk about construction a little bit. Before we look at all those cool construction photos, let me go quickly over the scoping timeline of the SR 509 improvements. So we're going to build SR 509 in three stages, Stage 1A, Stage 1B, and Stage 2. Stage 1A has been completed, fairly small scope, just building SR 99 bridge, some noise walls along I-... walls along I-5, do some earthwork. Stage 1B, that's what you see here in blue, lots of improvements along I-5, auxiliary lanes, collector distributors, new bridge, 216th Street Bridge, some local street improvements. Of course, the first mile of 509, four-lane highway, you know, toll point, and an interchange at 24th Avenue South. Also, we are in process of completely rebuilding I-5, SR 516 and Veterans Drive interchange, and we're going to be actually opening up that Veterans Drive Tunnel in mid-July, so we're kind of excited about that one. We are nearing substantial completion on Stage 1B. We're hoping it's going to be around September, and like John said, we are testing the tolls right now, that's going to be happening for about 90 days. So all in all, people can be able to utilize Stage 1B improvements in about a couple weeks, and then of course, there's some punch list items and other things. And Stage 2, that's the, the improvements you see here in sort of magenta color, three distinct geographic areas. One, it's of course finishing up the two miles of 509 Expressway and rebuilding 188 Street Interchange. We also have few improvements up in Burien at 160th Interchange, like a couple roundabouts and a couple noise walls. And now moving towards the center of the map here, we've done Barnes Creek Wetland Meagation Site, that's been completed, and we're doing monitoring and inspection, and of course, an auxiliary lane on I-5 between SR 516 and 272nd in southbound direction. We're also going to extend a noise wall on the east side of I-5 around 260th Street. And, and those improvements, Stage 2 improvements, we're going to be, we're hoping to open to traffic in about mid-2028. So, these are drone shots for that first mile of expressway. Photograph on the left where you see toll gantries and trucks, that was our toll vendor installing the equipment. We opened that up at 5:09 a.m. on Saturday, it's been operating smoothly, so people are using that. And I guess just want to remind folks that for 90 days, you can use it for free, just kind of test it out and see if it makes sense for you. We believe you can save some time and have more reliable trips by utilizing this first mile. Of course, the full benefits will come upon completion of Stage 2. And so these are photographs of a Veterans Tunnel that provides a more direct connection from Seaports and SeaTag down to Kent Valley. You know, have to make a bunch of left turns to get down to Kent Distribution Centers. So we're going to be opening this up mid-July. Excited about that one. And now on to Stage 2, what you see here is a vicinity map, lots of things have been happening on Stage 2 despite this being only our first construction season, lots of earthwork, the alignment is definitely taking shape, lots of grading. We haven't started auxiliary lane work on I-5, that's going to be starting next spring, but you do see some panel replacement work on I-5 in, in late September. And I think with that, I'm going to give it back to John to talk about community engagement.
Thanks Andre. So a couple things on, on the community engagement front. In this first three months, while people are, we were encouraging people to try out this first mile of 509, you'll see a variety of marketing and community engagement and educational information coming from the toll division. There's ads, there's, you know, there's bus wrappers, you know, there's, there's a lot of information being put out on social media, trying to educate people. We have a three-month period here where people, there's a window where people can get, if they don't have a transponder, to go with a good-to-go account, they can, there's a number of free ones that are available to encourage people to sign up, so we're trying to get that information out as well. We also get out into all of our partners, the communities, and meet people where they're at during the summer through fairs and festivals. You know, we're here in Kent at Cornucopia Days every single summer, you know, we were at Burien Strawberry Festival recently, and we'll be at the Des Moines Farmers Market in, here in July, and you'll see some of the other ones in between Burien and SeaTag, you know, our 509 partners. So we're always open to invites to, you know, from community groups and organizations as well. We're, we're building some roundabouts as part of completing the new expressway up in Burien. We've built some roundabouts at 160th that are almost complete, and we'll be building some roundabouts on South 188 Street. So we have a variety of tools and engagement information that we bring to the communities to help people understand how the roundabouts will work and how they tend to be safer and operate, function more efficiently than the stop intersections that maybe they're replacing. And lastly, we've got our ongoing construction notifications, you know, as we, we tend to keep lanes open most of the time on Gateway construction, but we have, you know, D2, we have reconfigurations of some of the interchanges, as you might have seen at the 516 Kent-Demoit Interchange, where we re-channel people this way and that way to make way for construction. That's what we have for you today, trying to keep it short and sweet. Again, really appreciative of the time, we're here to answer questions if you have any as well.
Councilmember, we'll start with Councilmember Troutner.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to thank you for being here and sharing this information with council, but also with our community, so they have an idea of what's going on. I appreciate the 90-day notice, that gives people a chance to try it out, see how well it works for them, and make it their new way to get around, so thank you for being here.
Councilmember Lurimer, did you have a question?
Where's my light on?
I don't see the lights, Councilmember Boies.
Thank you. So your toll escalation 2.15, that's every year, how do you determine that percentage? And is every year is going to go up that much?
So, so the Transportation, Washington State Transportation Commission set that policy, and a lot of it was based on lessons learned, so trying to keep pace with inflation is, you know, probably the basic storyline. One of the things that's important to understand about toll revenue is, not only, you know, you see that helps pay for the capital construction, there's bonds associated with that that have to be paid back. Toll also, tolling also provides revenue to ensure that the corridor we built that's told stays in a state of good repair, so there's revenue that goes to maintenance and preservation, which is a nice thing to have and given the state of transportation funding. The, the commission set that rate, but one of the things that comes with it is, every year that, starting in 2031 where they would consider it, it goes through a public process. So the way that they wrote the policy is that there, there'll be a public process to engage communities and other, you know, partner, you know, partners as they implement the 2.15 or, and I think the way it works is, you know, they, at least the way they discussed it is, you know, they'd round it to the nearest, you know, dollar or something, or 50 cents or something.
So it may or may not be 2.15, based on what's happened throughout that year, or is it?
The, the, one other thing I guess I'd mention is, this is the first time the commission has set a policy like this upfront. Typically, what they've done is they've, like if you look at the 99 Tunnel or the 520 Floating Bridge, they've, every year or two, they adjust toll rates based on what they're seeing in usage and things. They proactively put this in place, just given what the, the impacts they've seen, you know, as inflation kind of erodes away, what you get for the, you know, erodes away the toll revenue, they put this in place trying to be proactive, I think.
Okay.
So I think you're going to have to wait till you get to 2031 and see how the commission implements it, honestly.
Thank you, I'm good, appreciate it, sir.
Yes, Councilmember.
Thank you, Councilmember Fincher. Thank you, Andre and John. I have a couple of questions and a comment. I mean, this is, we've been waiting for this for a long time, obviously a conversation we had, when is it going to open? So we're excited to see this happening. My first question is about the low-income impacts. We're, you know, implementing it now, but the benefits or program is not getting started until December of 2026. So is there something in between a buffer of some type for families to utilize?
Not that I'm aware of, and I, and one of the things that's important to understand here is, this is kind of a watershed moment, you know, the, up through the entire history of tolling, modern tolling in Washington State, there has been no low-income option available to anyone. So this is a first that the legislature authorized, and the Gateway Corridors are going to be the first ones to receive the benefit. That said, the, the commission, as I kind of alluded to, they need to go through, you know, financial analysis, what they call traffic and revenue analysis, they have to set the policy. In the early conversations, they've talked about a policy set around somebody, people that are at the 50% that meet the federal threshold for low income, but they have to have a way to verify that, they have to work with the toll division to implement the policy, so that there's a way to kind of verify, you know, whatever policy is set that the toll division then can verify if somebody qualifies for it. And it just takes time to implement these new systems. You can't just, you know, turn it on, you know, instantaneously, you have to do analysis and then put the, you know, the toll division's going to have to kind of reconfigure their back office operation to be able to accept, you know, low-income users. So it's going to take the next year roughly for us to work through that.
I, I hear you, I'm just kind of worried about the people who, I really don't know who's going to be using it, so we'll find out, I guess. The other piece is spillover happening onto PAC Highway or like other Kent roads, and I'm sure Chad's been part of that conversation, like, it might happen, we don't know, or it might not happen, people trying to avoid tolls and freight impacts maybe in our community. And my, basically, the third comment was about community outreach. I think it'd be great, we also have a farmers market that happens every Saturday, so might be, might be a great place to reach out to diverse community at, at our farmers market. And I think that is all I had. Thank you.
Can I, if, just really quickly, maybe to address the, the second comment, you know, one of the things that's somewhat counterintuitive about Gateway is, without these, with these missing links in these both corridors in 509 and 167, you know, people are having to take, as you are well aware, city archerials, you know, state highways in the, within the cities, have to find their way without these freeway pieces, with these freeway pieces missing.
It's already happening, yeah.
So, when we open up the missing links, it just draws traffic in. So all that traffic that's using, whether it's 516 and 99, or whatever, 518, whatever routes they're choosing, I-5, those people are going to be coming into this corridor, so there's no way, there's not really a scenario where you're going to be adding traffic probably, you're just going to be drawing traffic in, and it's just a question of how much. One of the things we've invested heavily in is putting together a framework for how the whole local system operates in and around our toll corridors, working with the City of Kent and other city partners, so that we have a baseline before we opened up this first mile and before we open up the first three miles, that we'll then be able to come back and look at and see how the trends and see how things changed, and work with our partners if something needs adjustment.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, any other questions? Well, 26 years, that is a mighty long time, but we know that it takes a lot of money to get all of the, and partners to pay that money to get these projects done, and we certainly are anxious for it to get done. One more place that you should know or remember about when thinking about engaging our residents before it goes into effect is the Kent International Festival, because that will roll around again before it's, the impact actually hits also.
Okay, okay, we'll, we'll take note of those and we'll, we'll see, I mean, it's, we've still got a couple more years ahead of us, or, you know, two to three, three maybe years before we open up the full 509 corridor, and we're always open to enhancing our community engagement, so appreciate the input.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you for having us.
That is it for Public Works.
Thank you, Councilmember Fincher. With that, we adjourn until 5 o'clock for council meeting. Thank you. Thank you.
Good evening. Welcome to the Kent City Council Special Meeting for Monday, June 30th, 2025. If you could please all rise and join me in the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, the interior republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Kim, could you please call the roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mayor Ralph?
Here.
Council President Corr?
Here.
Councilmember Boyce?
Here.
Councilmember Boyd?
Here.
Councilmember Fincher?
Here.
Councilmember Larmour?
Here.
Councilmember Michaud? Councilmember Troutner?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. This is a special meeting, so we cannot have any changes to the agenda. Tammy, do we still need to vote on approval?
I would, since you normally do it at your regular meetings, I would.
Okay. So, as I said, this is a special meeting. We cannot have any changes. So, a motion would be in order to adopt the agenda as published.
So move.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries six zero. All right. We are going to move into public communications. We have two items this evening. The first item we have is recognition of our July 2025 Employee of the Month. So each month here at the city, employees get together and they nominate one of their coworkers that exemplify our mission, vision, and values here at the city of Kent. I am very pleased to announce that our July 2025 Employee of the Month is Steve Barton. Steve started working for the IT Department on April 1st, 2022, as a project manager. As a project manager, Steve leads and assists in the planning, introduction, and successful execution of projects for existing or new and improved software systems, hardware, and technology solutions. Steve was nominated because he consistently demonstrates exceptional project management skills, leadership qualities, and a dedication to achieving outstanding results, making him truly valuable to IT and the city of Kent. Steve demonstrates unwavering integrity in all of his actions. He is consistently transparent and honest, even when faced with challenging situations. For instance, during the budget review for the first PRISM system replacement project in public works, Steve openly addressed potential discrepancies and worked diligently to find equitable solutions. Steve genuinely cares about the well-being of his team members, and he fosters a supportive and inclusive environment where everyone feels valued and heard. He has consistently gone above and beyond to provide mentorship, guidance, demonstrating a deep commitment to professional growth of his colleagues, and his communication skills are exceptional. He proactively keeps stakeholders informed of project progress, potential roadblocks, and solutions, and regularly seeks innovative solutions for project challenges. He's not afraid to build, to challenge its status quo and explore new approaches. Steve continuously embraces our values, and we celebrate him as July's Employee of the Month. Congratulations, Steve. All right. The next item on our agenda is the Proclamation for Parks and Recreation Month. And joining us to accept the proclamation is our Parks Director, Julie Periscondolas. So Julie, I will go ahead and read the proclamation, and then I'm going to have all of council gather, because this is an all-city-wide proclamation. We'll do a quick picture, and then I'll have you say a few words.
Thank you.
All right. The proclamation reads, "Whereas parks and recreation are foundational to a thriving community, offering spaces that support physical health, mental well-being, and social connection for all who live, work, and play in Kent. And whereas Kent Parks serves the community through a wide range of inclusive programs and public spaces that reflect the city's diversity, promote lifelong learning, and nurture belonging across generations. And whereas Kent Parks contributes to the city's environmental resilience by preserving open space, managing natural resources, and creating opportunities for residents to connect with nature in their daily lives. And whereas the team behind Kent Parks works with passion and purpose, designing, maintaining, and programming spaces that bring people together, strengthen neighborhoods, and uplift community spirit. And whereas parks and recreation also serve as engines for local opportunities, supporting jobs, providing youth employment and training, and enhancing the economic vitality of the city. And whereas this year's theme, Build Together, Play Together, honors the ways parks help not shape just our landscape, but our relationships, uniting people through shared experiences, civic pride, and collective action. And whereas July 2025 marks the 40th celebration of Parks and Recreation Month, a moment to recognize the deep and lasting impacts parks have had on the quality of life in the communities across the country, including here in Kent. Now therefore, I, Dana Ralph, Mayor of Kent, do hereby proclaim July 2025 to be Parks and Recreation Month in Kent, Washington, and call all residents to celebrate the power of parks by stepping outside, exploring new places, joining in community events, and honoring the people who make it all possible. Let this month serve as a reminder that Kent invests in parks, it invests in people, and when we build together and play together, we shape the future that is healthier, stronger, and more connected for everyone." So what are we doing? We'll take over here. Council, if you all want to stand up and be...
We can do that. There we go. I think we all got the memo.
Awesome. Thank you, Mayor Ralph. On behalf of the entire Parks Department, I am super happy to accept the proclamation. It's officially my favorite month of the year for obvious reasons. You know, it's not every day you get to formally have your nation, the whole nation celebrates Park and Rec Month in July. We get to do a proclamation and talk about ourselves all month long, so it's great. As the proclamation mentioned, it is the 40th anniversary of celebrating Parks and Rec Month. And the theme Build Together, Play Together really is fitting, because, you know, we believe that when we build together, we're investing in something bigger in our communities and really creating that one connection, kind of one, one opportunity at a time. So this year, if you want to take one each, pass them down. These little puzzle pieces that are up here play a role, and I'll talk to you about that. Each year, we have a staff team that works on Park and Rec Month. They're not all of our programmers. They're our maintenance staff, our custodian staff, depending who's on that group. And they're the ones that create these cool opportunities for the community to participate and celebrate with us on Park and Rec Month. And this is the free, everything's free. It's all fun for families and friends. And so on Tuesday, July 1st, which is tomorrow, we have Popsicles in the Park, which is always a great favorite at Moro Meadows. Thursday, July 10th, we have Snack and Stroll at Hogan Park, where kids can make their own trail mix and snack mix, and then hike the trails. On Friday, we're coinciding, we have our official grand opening of Springwood Park. And so we're going to join a Park and Rec Month event with the grand opening. That's all in your schedule. And then also have a lot of cool, fun activities at Springwood. On Thursday, July 24th, is Build Your Own Sandimal, which is a really neat thing. I'm sure you've seen at the fair, where you can put sand and those, those things. And so we have a theme, and so that's going to be really neat out at Lake Meridian. And then we're wrapping the whole thing up on July 31st with our Royal Party, which was a great hit last year, where we, that's out of Van Dorn's. And we have all of the Disney characters out, and it's a whole thing. And so it's really exciting. And then throughout the month, we're introducing a new interactive experience. And we've done it every time that we've done. I'm sure you remember, we did Handprints on the Tree one year. We did, sorry, I guess my voice. We did like those little loops where each, each kid that wanted to do it, they did the chains. We're all connected. So this year is something different, where we have, for those of you with kids who know, they have these cool Lego boards that you can build Lego things on, right? And so we have custom Lego bricks, little baby bricks, and each one gets to put their name on and build. And they get to choose on which area they want to build something on. It could be focused on our three pillars, which are health and well-being, environmental stewardship, and then equity and inclusion. And then they get to pick which one is more important, as well as their family members, and they get to add their name. And so it's really a fun, hands-on experience. It really shows how each person in Kent helps build all of us together and something bigger than just themselves. So it's going to be really fun. Maybe on the next, at the end of the, I'll put it in here, and we can see like who chose what and where and how it built. And so you guys get a sneak peek of the puzzle. These come apart. And so at each trip, each event, you can get one of the puzzles, one of the pieces, and then turn this in, and you can win prizes. So with that said, I do want to just express, you know, our, my deepest appreciation to you, Mayor Ralph, and to all of you council members for each, for all of your continued investment in Kent Parks. It's been a journey over the last so many years, and you're the reason that we're able to evolve and to provide the services we do with the community and to build our parks into something new. And we keep getting better and better as we're going out there in all the programs. And we hope that you see it too, and all the smiles of the kids playing out there, and that we're honoring your commitment in us. So thank you so much for that. We would love to see you out. If you want to come out and participate in one of these, my staff will put you to work passing out, you know, popsicles and sandimals and things like that. And then finally, as always, the strength of our department is our people. And I can't say that with, you know, without saying it so much to every full-timer, part-timer, seasonal employee. These are our early risers, our late-night cleaners, our event hosts, our program leaders, maintenance crews, planners, and problem solvers. They're really what makes the department work. You know, it's easy, kind of not easy, but it's, you know, at the top, they make all the magic happen. In the field, they sacrifice their time, and they bring energy, creativity, and resilience. They make our parks vibrant, our systems reliable, and our spaces welcome. And they just truly make Kent better. And I'm just endlessly proud of the team over and over. So this month, we celebrate our staff. We celebrate you all, and we celebrate Parks and Rec in the community. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Julie. Councilmember Troutner, followed by Boyce, followed by Council President.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Julie, thank you to you and your crew. Again, you said it. It's the strength of your department that helps take care of so many things around the city, things that you wouldn't necessarily think of, from keeping our parks looking wonderful to keeping our building so that people can come to work and have a safe space every day. So thank you again for being here. And I know Councilmember Michaud would share her thanks as well. But again, appreciate it.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. You can't speak to Councilmember Michaud, because she's silent on vacation versus being here. So not sure about that. No, Julie, I can remember the first day you started here, and lots of energy. You had a nice plan. Definitely what Kent needed at the time to have you come here. And your leadership has been phenomenal. I know you say it's a team, the team, the team. I totally get it. But your leadership really have been a big plus for us. And I look forward to continue move us to the next level, or they may as say Kent Park Foundation, or you know, whatever may come down the road. But really, truly, you're a blessing for us to have you here at the city of Kent. So thank you for all you do.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Council President.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Julie. And I echo everything Councilmember Boyce has mentioned. We're very lucky to have you, and you have built this amazing team. And I, over the last several years, I've seen our events and everything that we do in our parks just step up. It's been amazing, and I enjoy attending them. Went to the Royal Party last year, and had, my daughter had fun. I mean, it just, it's just every year you're coming up with creative ideas, your team's coming up with those amazing things for our community to do, and bringing everybody together. I, I love that. That's what our parks is about. So thank you, and thank you for all you do.
Awesome. Thank you, Council President.
Also, I love, I love reading your long, thorough emails. I really do.
Everybody.
I really do. So keep it up, okay? Thank you.
Thank you so much, Julie. Really, really appreciate the entire department and the work that they do as a part of this city. And we're, we're grateful for that and the opportunity for our families to get out and just enjoy what's here. So thank you.
Great. And then I'll be back with our Lego cities, I guess. We'll see.
Very excited about the, very excited about the Lego idea. All right. We are going to move on. The next item on the agenda is report. So each one of the council members up here, not only is a part of the city council as a whole, but they represent the city across the region and the state, making sure that the voice of Kent is heard, that we are at the table when policy decisions are being made or grant money is being awarded. Very, very important work. I'm going to start with a couple of updates from the last several weeks, and then we'll go into our CIO report and our council reports. So about a week and a half ago, I had the opportunity to attend the U.S. Conference of Mayors conference in Tampa, Florida. Two primary reasons. I am the vice chair of Transportation and the New Economy, where we are really talking about how do we, how do we encourage Congress, federal government, to focus on distribution of transportation dollars to local government? So there's all of these intermediary steps. The federal government sends money to the state, the state sends it to the municipal planning organizations, regional planning organizations, and then on to cities. And what we know, especially coming out of COVID with the ARPA dollars, cities know what's important to their residents and what projects should be funded. And really bringing that decision-making when it comes to transportation dollars back to the local level is a focus of mayors from across the, from across the country. So opportunity to work, do some of that work. The other reason I attended the U.S. Conference of Mayors meeting, very, very proud of our police department. We applied for and were given a $100,000 grant for our SEALUP program, Community Immersion Law Enforcement Program. So we were recognized out of all of the cities in, in the country that applied for this grant as a medium-sized city for that program. And, and I know council is very aware and supportive of the program, where our brand-new officers, before they ever go to the academy, are paired up with a non, a local nonprofit. One of those local nonprofits is Vine Maple Place. And I received a letter in the mail this week from Vine Maple Place, sharing the story of a single mom and the impact that our, our new officer had on her in moving into stable housing. So absolutely brings tears to your eyes in the, in the best possible way. So I want to say thank you to the chief. We are the first city in the country to be doing this program. It was really an honor to have that recognized at, at the national level. I want to say thank you to Target for the $100,000 for that program. Really, really proud of the work that we're doing here in Kent. The other conference that I was able to attend in the last week was the Association of Washington Cities. So opportunity for elected officials from the 281 cities in the state of Washington to get together. I was asked to give a presentation on Kent 101. So our community outreach program that teaches our residents all about the different departments, the things that the city does, doesn't do. And we were alongside of, of Ellensburg, gave a presentation to a, a full room, and had a lot of conversations with electeds from all over the state wanting to know how they could start a program similar to Kent 101. So very proud of that work. The last thing I want to highlight, council, you had a presentation from WashDOT regarding the opening of the first mile of the 509 project. That, as you all heard, has been in the works for decades. And middle end of 1970s is when that, I think, the first newspaper article that I have seen about that project. So it was really exciting to be there for the media availability as they opened that first mile. I want to share a couple of the statistics that I shared with our local news outlets to kind of put a pin in why, why that project is so important to Kent. So the Kent Valley, or Kent is the sixth-largest city in the state, we all know that, and the largest community in the Kent Valley, one of the West Coast's largest industrial submarks for manufacturing, transportation, and wholesaling, with more than 105 million square feet of rentable building area for warehousing. The 509 will allow freight and employees to get from the deep-water ports when it's completed between Tacoma and Seattle, as well as the airport, directly into that industrial valley where that 105 million square feet exist. The Kent Valley has 12,000 businesses, providing 250,000 jobs, and generating over $45 billion in direct economic impact from the manufacturing, wholesaling, and transportation sectors. $45 billion dedicated to the economy. I think it emphasizes why we have been having the conversation with legislature that we've had, why the frustration is that they chose not to be supportive of what's happening here. But that 509 project is something that the state has invested in, but it's also something that we have invested in locally between Veterans Drive and then our partnership with grants going into this, this last phase of connection. So I thought it was important to talk about the impact that the city of Kent has on our, our local economy and our state economy, and why that 509 connection is so important. So with that, I am going to turn it over to our Chief Administrative Officer, Pat Fitzpatrick.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to update tonight. As the council may know by now, the Supreme Court has indicated that they intend to adopt new standards for public defense, which will drastically reduce the number of cases a public defender can handle each year. This rule will apply across the state to both felony and misdemeanor defense attorneys. We are very concerned about this rule and the impact it might have on the city of Kent and also our surrounding neighbor cities. As you know, public defense is funded through the general fund, and we have very few resources for this kind of funding. In response to the notice that the Supreme Court sent out a few weeks ago, the mayor issued a letter to the Supreme Court last week, asking the court to delay imposition of this rule for a three-year period so that a state study can be conducted. This rule has been passed without any state study being conducted. It's based on information from other states and the city, I'm sorry, the state of Washington has a unique... has a unique public defense system. The other thing that's a little troubling is the study itself that they relied on for these new standards specifically says that before a state adopts a standard, it should conduct a study. So we have sent a letter to the Supreme Court asking the court to delay imposition of this rule for a period of time to allow for a state study of the public defense system in Washington State in particular. A number of other cities are also submitting letters, and we're hopeful that this just buys time for us to conduct the study and determine whether or not changes are really needed. So that's where we are with that. We do have time. We're working on the issue diligently, and we hope to get some kind of resolution to this. I'll keep you posted. Thank you.
Thank you, Pat. And I want to say thank you to you for all of the work that you have put into this. Once again, Kent is leading the way in this conversation. I have had a chance to talk to mayors from all over the state who share those very same concerns. So between the budget impacts and the availability of public defenders, this will, without doubt, make our communities less safe, and that is very, very concerning. And will have more significant impacts on communities like Kent, where we have a higher number of people that are represented by the public defender than it will in more affluent communities. So once again, very disparate impacts in a state that talks about equity being the most important thing. So we've got a lot of concerns, but huge thank you to Pat for all the work that he's done on this. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Council President.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. For my report, we had our committee of the whole earlier this evening, and that agenda and video is available on Kent TV 21 and our Facebook page. I attended Green Kent Work Party on a Saturday two weeks ago, and in rainy and cold weather, we had about 14 volunteers show up, so that was pretty impressive. And again, kudos to our Parks Department, who organizes this, and next Green Kent event will be happening on second Saturday in July. I also attended the Juneteenth Celebration at Morrel Meadows Park with councilmembers, I saw councilmember Fincher and councilmember Board there. And I was at Association of Washington Cities Conference with Madam Mayor, councilmember Troutner, and councilmember Fincher, lots of learning and lots of networking, and I was also part of the nominating committee, so I was in interviews all day. It's always great to be, you know, in a lot of electeds, learning from them, and having conversations with them, and connecting on what's happening throughout the state, in small towns to big cities. So always a great event. And with that, I'm going to start with Councilmember Troutner.
Thank you, Madam President. I am on the Regional Transit Committee. We met on June 18th. We had a presentation on the FIFA World Cup events that are coming to our area in 2026. I know that these conversations are going to continue. As councilmembers, we will continue to hear more about this, how it will impact our city and those cities across the region, but the goal is to make this an amazing event and experience for people who love soccer. So looking forward to that. I am also Chair of the Puget Sound Regional Fire Authority. We met on June 18th. We awarded several of our members for captain and engineer. We also voted on the collective bargaining agreement for the RFA and our local 1747. More of that information and some of my time spent at AWC will be in the newsletter. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilmember Troutner. Councilmember Larmour, please.
Thank you, Madam President. I actually don't have a report this week. My committees have not met, so.
Thank you, Councilmember Larmour. Councilmember Boyce.
I don't have a report either, but I did also turn K back, and just want to give a shout-out to Gwen, as always, she just does a phenomenal job. So a little wet, a little cold, but managed to get through it, so thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Boyce. Councilmember Boyd.
Yes, I had no committee meetings neither, but I did, I went to K back, and Bill Boyce was there, so let everybody know he was there, clowning and everything, but he was there. Anyway, 10:30 on June 18th, here at the Kent City Hall Chambers, we had the Equity Inclusion Speaker appear here. His name was Dr. Terrence Roberts. And if any of you guys know who he is, he's one of the Little Rock Nine. He, back in Arkansas, back in 1957, from a following decision by the United States Supreme Court, the Brown versus Board Education, to appear in a second-grade school. Him and his eight other students decided that they wanted to do something that they felt was right, and they were also picked through a thorough process to be the ones that, who crossed these barriers. This was really important to me because this man has kind of laid the groundwork for black people, people of color, for people who want the equal rights like anybody else. And I talked to him, he's a very interesting person. He resides in California, he has a home in Georgia. As a matter of fact, he grew up in some of the areas that I grew up in California. So we had a long conversation, and I thought what he did and what he went through was really courageous. And he also told me that what a lot of people don't know is, there was a Little Rock Ten, not just nine. The tenth person was a little girl who dad worked at a factory owned by a Caucasian man, and the Caucasian man told the dad, said, "If your daughter goes to that school, I'm going to fire you. You're going to lose your job." So the little girl dropped out, that's how it became Little Rock Nine. And to come to find out, he said, even after the little girl dropped out, the guy was fired anyway, so. But other than that, I had a good week. I, like I said, went to the festival, K back, Gwen, Tina, everybody was there. We had a good time, even though it rained, I didn't think a lot of people was going to make it, but we had a good time. And the rest of my report will be in our newsletter, and that's in this report. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Boyd. Councilmember Fincher, please.
Thank you. I went to the nighttime version that was open to the public to hear Dr. Roberts speak. What I enjoyed too is that the public was there asking good questions. Sometimes people are just quiet, but there were some good questions asked them that evening, so that is part of our Kent Equity Inclusion Speaker Series, a series that is open to the public. It's a free series where a few times a year, speakers are brought in. So it's a great opportunity. The city does lots of different things that you can avail yourself to. I also went to a meeting, a group of faith communities got together with the Chief of Police from Kent and the Chief of Police from Covington to work on, our chief was there, to work on ways to make relations better between the police departments and the community. What was nice to hear is they had missed some of the things that Kent Police does actually do proactively, and mainly chief, but were able to run down a list of those things, which some people were pretty surprised at. But aside from that, I also was at the conference this week, the AWC conference, some other things. There will be reports, or my, more information will be in my council report. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Fincher. And I'll throw that in as well, that we will have a council report coming out, newsletter coming out on Wednesdays, so more information, all the pictures will be in that newsletter. But with that, back to you, Madam Mayor.
All right. Thank you, Council President. We will move on in our agenda. The next item is public hearing. We do not have one this evening. Item number seven is public comment. Kim, do we have anyone signed up to provide public comment?
Yes, we do. We have one person, Michael Johnson, and then I also received a written comment from the King County Government Affairs Master Builders Association of King and Snohomish Counties, which I've provided copies of that to you and the council.
All right, thank you. Mr. Johnson, if you want to come up, I'm going to go ahead and read through the rules here for public comment, and then we'll go ahead and turn it over to you. So the public comment period is the opportunity to speak to the council and mayor on issues that relate to the city of Kent or agenda items the council will consider. This is not an open public forum, and comments that do not relate to the business of the city of Kent are not permitted. And additionally, state of Washington strictly prohibits people from using public comment period to, as an opportunity for political campaign purposes, including supporting or opposing a ballot measure or a candidate for public office. We do ask that you state your name and city of residence for the record, and we have a three-minute timer.
Okay, thank you. My name is Michael Johnson. I live here in Kent on Jason Avenue. I'm here to talk about rezoning, in particular, relative to the Mill Creek Historic District. The first thing I'd like to ask, I sent all of you an email on June 19th with a chain behind it, and I'm hoping you got it, and I'm hoping you had a chance to read it. That way, I don't have to go over everything. I've tried desperately to follow the process here, but I don't seem to be making any headway, so you're kind of the last resort, I think. I attended the Land Use and Planning Board meeting, gave my public testimony, and they, I guess the answer to that is they could care less. They didn't have no questions, they had no discussion. And in fact, at the end of the meeting, they just said, "We're going to advance the rezoning package as is." I talked to the chair afterwards, and I asked him, "Well, how come you didn't at least discuss it or do something?" And he said, "Well, the woman in planning, Kristin Hordsworth, who I think is the main line of receiving all the comments, she said, she's working the problem." Well, she was at the meeting in the Zoom, but the problem is that she's had a medical issue, she's on medical leave, and she's not coming back until next week. She seems amenable to try and put something into the code, but it's not obvious to me that the rest of her staff picked up any of the slack. She actually called, or talked to me the other day and said, "Let's meet next week." So we're going to meet following week, and she said, "There's a round two," which I don't know how that works in the scheme of things, but basically, I'm trying to get the zoning to essentially disallow demolition of the historic houses in the district. We don't rule out any extra ADUs, you can put ADUs in the back of the property, so we're not fighting the state law here. We're just trying to prevent the houses from being destroyed and put it in the zoning. I don't see how that, why that wouldn't be allowed. And so I guess I'm asking the council, since you have to vote tonight to approve it, maybe you could make a resolution to the planning staff to fold in a later amendment at the next update. I don't know what else to do here, because I don't understand all the rules, but I'm pleading with you to try and do something to protect the historic district. It's established by Kent, and you should protect it.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. I am going to direct you right to the back of the room. Kurt Hansen, our Economic and Community Development Director, is the gentleman back there in the jacket, and he can give you some sort of in-depth details on the process, and then I will, for the audience, provide some high-level information when we get down to that item. But if you wouldn't mind having a quick chat with Kurt, I think he can help allay some of your concerns, at least about process.
Okay, thank you. I apologize for my outfit, I had to come off the golf course.
It is five o'clock on a very, very sunny afternoon, and I think everybody's jealous that they weren't in the same place as you.
Don't rub it in.
All right, Kim, do we have anyone else signed up?
We do not.
Okay, thank you. Next item on the agenda is the consent calendar. We have items A through G, and this is a compilation of items that the council has worked on in both workshop and committee of the whole, had an opportunity to have discussion, ask questions, and these items have passed out of committee of the whole without any controversy. Is there a motion to approve consent calendar items A through G?
So move.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries six-zero. That brings us down to other business, which is Recode Kent Project Phase One Ordinance, amending titles 12 and 15 of the Kent City Code. Just as a little bit of background, this is the reason why council is having a special meeting this evening. The legislature, over the last two sessions, has passed many, many, many laws when it comes to housing and zoning, and taken quite a bit of local control away from cities, put requirements in place that are across statewide. And the unfortunate thing about this is the deadline was very, very tight. So you all have been doing work on the comp plan, and then we had this deadline of these new changes to the zoning code being needed to be put in place by July 1st. So there will be a Phase Two, in which, you heard Mr. Johnson's comments, that we'll have an opportunity potentially to take some of them up. Again, the state took away a lot of cities' abilities to make zoning changes that make sense to their individual communities, so I don't want to make any promises. You all can ask those questions in that second phase. But tonight, this is really about getting in under that very, very tight deadline that the state set for councils across the state to sort of make this very, very first set of amendments before we can go back and take a deeper dive and have a more robust conversation. So with that, I'm going to ask Samantha Doyle to join us at the podium to go through the information.
All right, good evening, councilmembers. Thank you, Mayor Ralph, for that tee-up and emphasis on the accomplishing the statutory deadlines and a lot of work in a tight timeframe, and the team has passed this put on over to law for this final effort. I'm Samantha Doyle, Assistant City Attorney, and I'm here tonight to present the final phase, or the finalized Phase One of the Recode Kent Ordinance. As you know, Recode Kent Project is a multi-phase effort to update the city's housing code, and this first phase of the project is focused on those statutory requirements and bringing the city into compliance, and just the adoption deadlines that are for today, June 30th. And the substantively finished draft of the ordinance was recently presented at the June 17th Committee of the Whole meeting by Kristin Hordsworth, the city's Long Range Planning Manager. And the ordinance before you tonight has changed slightly, but not substantively. We specifically made some non-substantive edits, including adding information to the recitals, so there's a more full explanation of the legislative history and what the ordinance includes. We also corrected a few Scribner's errors and made some boarding manning changes. Nothing exciting. And as a reminder, this ordinance brings the city of Kent into compliance with the statutory updates to the Growth Management Act and many other housing laws. And as you've heard over the past months and presentations, this ordinance contains provisions addressing middle housing, step housing, parking for ADUs, and other residential requirements for parking, provides a density bonus for religious organizations, has additional requirements for housing within existing buildings, and unit lot divisions and design review standards, among many things. And then, as you heard, not only did we receive support from the Master Builders Association, but we just want to relay that staff has mentioned that they are committed to evaluating the requests specific to the Mill Creek Historic District, and just ensure that whatever potential impacts there may be, there's no unintentional consequences, and that it fully aligns with state requirements. So upon adoption, these updates would then be effective within 30 days, and work on Phase Two of this multi-phase project would begin in the next couple of months. And with that, that concludes my presentation. If any of you have any questions.
Right, council, any questions? All right, I am not seeing any. A motion would be in order.
Madam Mayor, I move to adopt ordinance number 4517, amending titles 12 and 15 of the Kent City Code to implement housing requirements in compliance with new state legislation and the city's 2044 comprehensive plan.
So move. No, you move. Second, second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
We're acting real quick. Mr. Johnson, I know he brought some stuff up, I don't know all the details behind what he was bringing up, and I know he's talking to him now. Something he talked about, well, that's something that will be considered in Phase Two as we move forward.
We can certainly talk about it. I don't want to make any promises. The state requirements are really restrictive on what we can and cannot do. I know that Kristin and the team are very much committed to trying to find a way. I think it's just, I couldn't tell you one way or the other, whether it's fully within our authority to be able to preserve the historic neighborhood, which is his concern.
Thank you. Okay.
Council President Corr, followed by Councilmember Troutner, and then Fincher.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Actually, that was my first part of my question about making sure that we find a way to preserve our historic
our historic housing that we have already, you know, we established that they're historic homes, and we have names and all the history behind them in our, and we want to make sure that we find a way to preserve them for our community. And the second piece, I just want to, for our residences, this is restrictions that we are rushing through the process. It seems like, well, we haven't really rushed through it, but it's a restriction we have from the state requirement that we have to adopt this tonight. And we will be looking at this. I know that our staff will be working thoroughly through the Phase Two, I'm hoping, through Phase Two with more input from our communities. And I, parking flexibility still makes me uneasy, but we have to go with the flow right now. So, thank you.
Councilmember Troutner.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to say kudos to Kristin and staff for the amount of time that was spent on this, not just to put this piece together and bring it to council, but the amount of time spent in Olympia during this last legislative session to make sure that we have documents that we can get behind. And just to mention that we are, I think, one of the few cities that has brought this forward for council to take action on, and doing it in the amount of time that we're supposed to. So a lot of hard work put into this process, and I'm happy to support it. Thank you.
Councilmember Fincher.
Councilmember Cor had the same questions I did, so thank you.
All right. We have a motion and a second. We've had some discussion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries six-zero. I want to say thank you, Sam. Thank you, Kristin, and the whole team that have spent countless hours, late nights, weekends, Saturdays, Sundays, 2:00 a.m.s on this project. It's, here's my opinion, it's very, very frustrating that the legislature was not more concerned about the amount of work and significant change when they imposed these deadlines. Kent staff took those deadlines very seriously, and this is where we are at. There are things, as I have been out talking to community members, things that are very concerning to our residents. And I get the question a lot, "How come I didn't get a chance, we didn't vote on that?" And that is absolutely correct. You vote on legislators, legislators make laws, they then impose them on the city. So the changes that we are seeing here are 100% driven by legislation. And the unfortunate thing is, is that in a lot of it, city councils do not have the ability to make decisions that may be the best for their community there, being driven at a state level. So some significant frustration there. There are things that were good that have passed. I'm not saying that, but I think there's a lot that is concerning. I know in conversations I've had with council members, and certainly in conversations I've had with the community. But this is where we are. We're making the absolute best of it. And I can tell you that we have amazing staff that have done everything they can to continue to make sure that these impacts are lessened on the Kent community. So, all right. With that, item number 10 is bids. We do not have any this evening. 11 is executive session, and we do not have an executive session. So that brings us down to adjournment. I want to say happy 4th of July to everyone. If you get a chance to enjoy the day safely with your family and friends. And with that, we are adjourned.